Mayor and Council Meeting, and I would like to ask Councilmember Hall if he would lead us in the pledge. Don't forget to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall.
You're welcome.
The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Judy, a motion to approve?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, to the mayor's report, and I've got a proclamation for Black History Month. And I'll go ahead and read that. Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time for recognizing and reflecting on the central role of blacks in U.S. history. And whereas the story of Black History Month began in 1915 with Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans establishing the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History and founded the first Negro History Week in February of 1926. And whereas Negro History Week, growing in success for over 50 decades, was officially recognized on the national level and became a month-long celebration of black history in 1976 by President Gerald Ford. And whereas February was designated Black History Month in recognition of black achievements that greatly impact American history and culture. And whereas the Cultural Arts Division of the City of Roswell Recreation Park's Historic and Cultural Affairs Department, working with a volunteer steering committee, will host Roswell Roots, a festival of black history and culture. And whereas community partnerships help support this month-long festival, including Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Phi Phi Omega Chapter, De Jolie Callan Dance, Fulton County Remembrance Coalition, Grand Way Community Group, National Council of Negro Women, North Fulton Area Section, Paint Love, Roswell Cultural Arts Center, Rubicon Studios, Soul Food Cypher, and Roswell Southern Trilogy of Homes. And whereas the 2021 Roswell Roots Festival includes exhibits and events, including live, streaming, and virtual options focused on the culture of black history, including art, storytelling, music, education, literature, and more, and celebrates the contributions of Roswell's African-American citizens, both past and present. Now therefore, I, Lori Henry, Mayor of the City of Roswell, do hereby proclaim all of February 2021 as Black History Month and call upon all of our citizens to recognize this special celebration of African-American heritage and culture through participation in all of the events of Roswell Roots Festival. And thank you so much to our Recreation Historic and Cultural Affairs Department. And I believe we've got someone, Becky Hawkins. And first, I'd like to thank Becky because she has done such a great job with this. And I know she's got a lot of challenges doing this virtually, and I think she's going to tell us all about it, and she's going to introduce us to some of the steering committee. So Becky, would you take it away, please?
Yes, of course. Thank you so much, Mayor Henry and City Council. We are truly beyond excited to welcome back Roswell Roots in celebration of National Black History Month. And we do have a presentation, I think, that's getting ready to be shared, just to go over some highlights of the festival this year. Well, first, we would like to recognize our committee members, as well as our committee chair, who is joining us tonight, Gail Bohannon. And in addition, joining us tonight, we have Corinne Sutherland, our cultural arts supervisor, who's running the slideshow for us, and Stephen Malone, Deputy Director. The planning for Roswell Roots over the last year, similar to all other programs and events, has continued to be flexible and adapt to an ever-changing environment. But with these challenges came opportunities to expand our reach and impact. This year, Roswell Roots will include in-person events with health and safety protocols in place, as well as the addition of both virtual and live streaming options, ensuring everyone can enjoy being a part of Roswell Roots in whatever capacity is comfortable and convenient. So to kick off this year's Roswell Roots Festival, we welcome Ok Cello to Roswell Cultural Arts Center this Saturday evening, Okori Ok Cello Johnson. He's an American cello songwriter whose artistry integrates cello performance, live sound looping, improvisation, and storytelling, all culminating in original compositions that collide classical with jazz, EDM, reggae, and funk. Please let us know if you'd like to attend that. It's going to be a great show. In addition, our speaker series this year includes renowned authors and artists joining us from across the nation, including illustrator and author McCall Rowe. She is best known for her illustration work on the book Superheroes Are Everywhere, written by Vice President Kamala Harris. We will also welcome Dr. Francois Clemens and Drew Lanham. Dr. Clemens will discuss his new memoir and the time he spent portraying Officer Clemens on the beloved TV series Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. Author Drew Lanham has become well-known for his book The Home Place, which discusses finding joy and freedom in the same land his ancestors were tied to by forced labor, and as an ornithologist navigating a profoundly white field of study as a black man. We will also host local author Birdell Jackson and artist Rodrick Vines. To continue to engage youth, we have partnered with the nonprofit organization Paint Love, who will be hosting eight different art workshops for ages 11 to 14. These workshops will focus on an array of black artists, their work, and the impact and influences the work of black artists has provided. We invite curious minds of all ages to visit the traveling exhibit African-American Inventors at Bullock Hall. This exhibit showcases the many inventions engineered by black inventors. We are also thrilled to welcome back so many of our favorites, including dancing and drumming with Jolie Callan, storytelling with Bubba Tunde, a virtual evening with Soul Food Cypher, and virtual college workshops designed for high schoolers. These are really just a few of the highlights that celebrate Roswell Roots and black history and culture throughout the month of February in the City of Roswell. Thanks to our Community Relations Department and webmaster Ben Frye, all these programs and events can be found on our newly redesigned webpage, roswellroots.com. So please be sure to visit roswellroots.com for more details and registration information for all in-person, virtual, and live streaming events. Thank you for the continued support and to our committee members, community partnerships, and other City of Roswell departments, whose collaboration continues to support Roswell Roots year after year. Again, I would like to applaud City of Roswell's staff, who helped plan an innovative and diverse festival in an unprecedented time, including Donna Clayton, David Crowe, Deana Bush, Ben Frye, and especially Corinne Sutherland, who worked continuously and optimistically to ensure Roswell Roots not only continued to exist, but even expanded and improved in this pandemic world we've been trying to navigate. Finally, we look forward to celebrating Roswell Roots 2021 with each and every one of you and the community, either in person, virtually, or both. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky Hawkins. I've got a note here that also Gail Bohannon is in attendance. And I would love to call on Gail to give us a few words of wisdom and encourage us to join in on the festivities in February.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. I haven't seen some of you all in such a long time. But again, it's Roots again. I guess we are in our 21st year, 2021, of celebration. So I hope to see some of you all with your mask, of course, just kind of, you know, go by your eyes. But I think this is going to be a remarkable year of celebration. We have done some things that we have never done before, and which I think is going to be a better attendance because people will enjoy doing it more with their family and everybody watching things together. So again, Happy New Year. Hope to see some of you all at a lot of the events or on Zoom.
Thank you, Ms. Bohannon. And I would like everyone to give the group applause, our staff, as well as the steering committee. Thank you all. I know it's going to be a great month ahead of us, even though we are doing it virtually in many cases. But I'm looking forward to it, and I'm looking forward to attending many of the events. And I encourage council, as well as our citizens, to join in. It really, there are a lot of fun events. Thank you again. The next item I've got on the agenda is, this is really cool. The recognition of Zoe Rosenberg earning the rank of Eagle Scout. And I know that I've got the scout leader John Hannah is with us, and I believe he's going to tell us about Zoe's accomplishments. Yes, Mr. Hannah?
Thank you, Mayor Henry and City Council members. It's really your pleasure to be here talking on behalf of Zoe tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak about scouting, and particularly one special, very special scout. First, if I may, a little bio on scouting and our troop. I've been associated with Boy Scouts of America now for a little over 12 years. Scouting prepares youth to become responsible, participating citizens, as well as leaders making ethical and moral choices over their lifetime. This is commonly known as living the scout oath and scout law. From a child's earliest introduction to scouting, they will complete multiple advancement levels from the beginning rank of scout to the pinnacle of becoming an Eagle Scout. There are seven advancement levels in all. Each of these advancements will be, will have them completing various advancement and community service projects, merit badges, and taking many, many leadership positions for the troop. The designation of Eagle Scout is the highest advancement in the BSA scouting program, and less than 4% of eligible scouts achieve this distinguished rank. Excuse me. It takes a tremendous commitment and usually many, many years to complete and earn the rank of Eagle. By the time you become an Eagle Scout, you're able to grasp a true understanding of teamwork, the ability to leave by example and not by given orders. You master listening and communication skills and gain a high level of confidence and have a powerful code of conduct. Roswell United Methodist is a chartered organization for two BSA troops, and I am extremely proud to be associated with both. Troop 431 is a troop for boys and has been in existence and meeting for 57 years. During this time, we've had the privilege of celebrating the advancement of 192 Eagle Scouts, or 12% of the Eagle Scouts who have joined the troop. Councilwoman Hall, your son Donnie, being the 192nd. This evening, though, I want to focus on a particular scout from our other troop. Troop 432 started less than two years ago on February 1st, 2019. Though it took a lot of pre-planning, we started about six months prior. February 1st was the official first day that Boy Scouts of America, under its new name, Scouts BSA, welcomed girls into the program. We were one of the first girls troops in the area and started with seven founding scouts. We have grown to 29 girls over the two-year period. One of the seven original is the reason that I'm speaking here tonight. Zoe Rosenberg exemplifies all of the good in scouting. Since I have known Zoe, she has constantly demonstrated that she is a loyal, kind, and helpful person. Whenever Zoe's name is brought up in conversation, either by adults or by scouts, the same comments always prevail. She is a strong role model and a good leader. Zoe is an honest, fun, and outgoing young lady. Her leadership style is a mix of humor and servient leadership. As Zoe has progressed through the ranks, I have witnessed her commitment to being helpful to all scouts, not only her peers and the young girls in the troop, who are very much look up to her, but girls and boys from other troops as well. She has served the troop in leadership position as a webmaster, patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, twice, and most recently, a senior patrol leader. A senior patrol leader is the person responsible for running the troop, as we are a scout-led troop. I was impressed with Zoe's ability to successfully manage virtual school, pandemic changes, and finalizing her merit badges to complete her Eagle requirements with tremendous success. Lastly, when carrying out her Eagle Service Project, Zoe directed 32 volunteers for 301 and a half hours for her benefactor, Temple Beth Tikva. The project consisted of clearing foliage and roots, building retaining walls and stairs for a walking path. Zoe serves as an example of all youth in our community, though through her high level of achievement, leadership, and community service. I'm very proud to say Zoe Rosenberg successfully sat for her Eagle Board of Review on January 11th, and is the first girl in Northern Ridge District to earn the rank of Eagle Scout. To accomplish this in less than two years is truly remarkable and a testimony to Zoe's determination. There is no stopping this young lady when she sets her mind to achieve something. Zoe will be part of the first historic and inaugural class of female Eagle Scouts on February 8th, 2021, which coincides with 111th anniversary of Boy Scouts of America. Mayor Henry, City Council members, thank you very much once again for my time to present Zoe's hysterical accomplishment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let's give Zoe Rosenberg a round of applause, please. That's awesome. And Zoe, congratulations. I wish you were here so we could take a picture with you. But I promise when COVID is over with, we'll drag you into City Hall and have a picture with you. So please know that we, this community is proud of you. It's not just your family or your friends being proud of you. We're all very proud of you. And thank you for all your hard work and your commitment to scouting. That's just incredible. The next item on the agenda is the approval of appointments to the Historic Gateway Citizens Advisory Committee, also known as HGCAC. And those people are Bill Hoben, Kristen Riley, Rob Ross, Donna Beatty, Winnie Goble, Stephanie Clark, Michael Del Pecero, Jerry Di Carlo, Heather Askew, and Michael Fitzgerald. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilmember Tyser. I've got a second by Councilmember Hall. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. The next item is the approval of the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals reappointment. Maria De Chelles, Stu Mouring, David Palmer, David White, and Robert Maddox. Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilmember Judy. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. And I would like to thank all of the volunteers on boards and commissions, and those that are just now volunteering their time to be on a committee or renewing their time on a board. We couldn't do it without you. The volunteer hours that we have from our citizens are just, we can't even count the good things that have come out of that and how much has been contributed to the community. So thank you all that are volunteering your time. And then also, I would like to encourage anyone that is thinking about it, please go on the website, put your name in the hat. I'm more than happy to interview everybody that puts their name in, and then we'll move forward with those as well. So I encourage you all to get involved. It is very rewarding. Years and years ago, I was on the Design Review Board, absolutely loved it. It was just great work. I enjoyed the time. And also, the other thing that I think that is really important in volunteering are the people that you meet. Because I met a lot of folks on the Design Review Board that I would have never known had I just stayed at home and not contributed my time. So I would encourage everyone to do that, and thank you all for volunteering. The next item is the Administration of Finance Department, Councilmember Marie Willsey.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mayor. Item number five, approval of text amendments to Section 14.3.3 zoning requirements in Chapter 15, Special Events, Filming, and Public Use of City Facilities at the City of Roswell Code of Ordinances. This is the first reading. And this item will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Michael Fisher.
Mr. Davidson, would you give the reading, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order to delete Section 14.3.3 of the City of Roswell Code of Ordinances regarding special events and to amend 15, Special Events, Filming, and Public Use of City Facilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Roswell and for other purposes. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Roswell pursuant to their authority do hereby adopt the following amendment, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference. They've approved this to be the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. As you all know, this item, you've seen a couple of times, we've had some good discussions on how to make some of the changes. I'm just going to really briefly just share my screen, just to kind of put back up again where we're at with this item. Other than a couple of some of the text changes where we're cleaning some things up regarding our Special Events Division versus Rec. Parks versus Com. Dev. and some of those things, we've made some changes, some recommendations to how we do our permits. And hopefully, to make it a little bit easier, we went along with going, using our zoning regulations rather than just trying to pick and choose where to have events. So just as kind of a recap, there is no limit on the number of events unless it's a nonprofit with alcohol. And they're still going to be, with no change to what the current ordinance is, they have two times. And that doesn't restrict a nonprofit from having more events with alcohol. That just means that they can have events that they host and that they provide the alcohol themselves. We limit that to two because there's really no restriction on them other than being allowed to do that for these events. But they can have as many as they want. It's just after two, they would have to go with the licensed alcoholic beverage permit, or licensee holder. The next item that we talked about was the duration of the events. We're not limiting any duration, just like we do in the current ordinance, except for if they have alcohol. And that's recommended to limit to three consecutive days, which is what we currently do. And again, that's so that we don't have basically a type of an open bar set up where they're just serving alcohol all the time in a facility. We want this to be continued as a special event. So if they're serving alcohol, it's three, no more than three consecutive days, which is what's in our current ordinance. The fourth, the third point was events that are allowed on zoning. So based on what we heard back from mayor and council in previous discussions, we went with all the zoning codes except for conservation and residential. We've talked in the past about why that is. Those two zoning areas are extremely restrictive. So rather than staff trying to decide what would ultimately be appropriate or not in residential conservation, the organizers will go through the same permit process. They'll get reviewed. We'll go through everything with them. But before we give them the final approval, we'd like to have that back to mayor and council for the final approval. So that would be the only difference in this first reading, other than, well, basically going to using zoning codes and then having mayor and council approve if it's going to be in a residential or a conservation zoning area. And so that's kind of the differences that we have. We have the first reading, and we're looking for an approval to move forward to the second reading to change this ordinance. And I'll answer any questions.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Fisher? Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Mr. Fisher, thanks for your walking through the very clear bullets, et cetera. And I know you've led this discussion many times, and you've done a great job, and I appreciate it. So I guess my question, you know, I want to use some real examples. And the two real examples I've been using, one, I'd heard mixed things in different meetings where I believe some had said that the grass area next to nine had been a special use permit. Some had said it was not. It was a different rule. So instead of using that example again, I'll use the beer garden from the earth. So for that one, if From the Earth wants to do a beer garden again, and this passes, then first of all, with that example, that location they had used was conservation. So ultimately, staff would not have the final approval. It would have to come to a public vote from mayor and council. Is it, am I understanding that step so far correctly?
That's correct. Yes.
And then, so if mayor and council approves it, I want to understand how it works. So there's a rule, three consecutive days. So hypothetically, they can do, they would be able to do Friday, Saturday, Sunday. They could not do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
That's correct.
And now, are they able to do three days every single week if approved? Or is that something that mayor and council has the ability to approve? Or is it three consecutive days, and that's it for the year? How does that work for that example?
So the one permit, the permit that they would be applying for, if we use that example, I think last time they actually did a permit that they wanted to do it for like the whole summer. And so we approved, I think, one month at a time. These permits would be permitted for the three consecutive days. However, with conservation and residential, they'll come to mayor and council first, and we'll provide whatever information. If they're asking for the whole summer, we can bring that in when we come. And in certain instances, that may be fine. If they're not changing anything in the event, and they want to do it for more than, you know, three days, and they want to wait and do it again the next weekend, I think that would be very appropriate. So we would let that come to you as we do the request. Normally, a special event is just going to be, 90% of the time, they're going to come and do a special event and leave. So on those ones that have a little bit of a difference to them, if it's something staff can do, we'll look at that. If not, we'll let you know what that request is, if it's in conservation or residential. You may want to do it on a monthly basis to be reviewed once a month or for an entire season. I think that would be up to you. But we could work that out either way if they're not changing anything in their event.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm perfectly clear on it. So the way it's written today for this, for this first reading, the way it's written is a place like, and I'm just using them as an example. Again, my goal is, I love, I love the opportunity to encourage more being outside in events like that, if in the appropriate area, if approved by mayor and council. So for using this example, they, it would be legal and allowable for them to do it, say, to request for the whole summer, knowing as long as they're, they're not doing more than three consecutive days each week during the summer. And that's something that mayor and council then could legally either approve, deny, or amend?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments from council? Councilmember Judy?
So, Michael, just making sure, as the ordinance is written right now, not in the first reading, conservation did not allow special events, correct?
Correct.
So we are changing that for conservation to allow special events with the approval of mayor and council.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions from council? Councilmember Willsey? Council member Willsey?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Fisher. A question, when a special event proposal comes to council for approval or denial, are, what is our leeway in being able to put some certain conditions on it as far as like time limits and things like that? Do we have the same ability to do conditions as we would with any other, I guess, approval?
Yeah, that's the way I envision it, much like people come through comm dev for like a conditional use or something. And I might ask David, because he kind of helped on this, if he would weigh in on that. But once it comes to you guys, you know, you're mayor and council, so ultimately, you have the authority. I mean, you can't break an ordinance, but we don't have anything in the ordinance specifically to that. So, I think in your approval, you have that ability. I believe that's correct.
Right, okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
David, you good with that?
Yeah, there's standards set out in the ordinance for denial of a permit. There's other, there's a section 15.1.7 that talks about special conditions that can be placed on by the departments. So, mayor and council can put in conditions on there that they deem necessary in order to ameliorate any effects the event would have on surrounding properties or traffic or anything else.
Good, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Additional questions, comments from council? We do not have anyone in the public that would like to speak about this topic, so I would be looking for a motion.
All right, yes, thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the first reading of item number five, approval of text amendments to section 14.3.3 zoning requirements and chapter 15, special events filming and public use of city facilities.
We have a motion by council member Willsey. Do I have a second? Second by council member Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Back to you, council member Willsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six, presentation of the fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. This is presented by Ryan Luckett, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We are here this evening, we've recently completed our fiscal year 2020, and we're here this evening to present to you our comprehensive annual financial report. We have with us Adam Fraley, who is a partner with our auditing firm, Malden and Jenkins, and I'll turn it over to him in just a moment. Before I do that, I did want to just thank our accounting staff for the work they've done over the last six months to put all this information together and to ensure that everything was accurate and reported fairly. And just want to thank all of our departments for all their support, as well as you all, mayor and council, and our city administrator, Mr. Palmer, for your leadership and support in making sure that we continue on the firm financial footing that Roswell is known for. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fraley and let him present his presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am here tonight to present the audit report. I understand that you each have in your packets what we call the auditor's discussion and analysis. And I also understand that you have each a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report, which I will refer to both of those documents as the ADNA and the CAFR out of my presentation. Also, as I go through the ADNA, which is going to be kind of a summary of the audit results, a little bit on the numbers, hitting some of the highlights, I'll try to refer to the page number that I'm on so that you can follow along with me in that. Before I get started, you know, I really want to echo what Ryan was saying there as far as, you know, the, all the help that the finance department, even those outside of the finance department that we touched through our audit process, all the efforts they go through. And of course, you know, as we all know, this was a very unusual year. Like everything else, it makes even auditing harder. It makes even preparing for an audit harder. And, you know, it went really, really smooth. I really want to give a pat on the back to the whole finance department. You know, I think we dated our reports on December 10th and issued just thereafter, so we were not even coming close to the required deadline that the state of Georgia requires. And, you know, it's, you know, just did a real good job. So, I really appreciate, and I do want to say that first off. In our audit discussion analysis, if you will turn to me with me to page two, this is information about our firm that in case y'all are not familiar with Malden Jenkins, we are a full-service CPA firm, like any typical CPA firm that you would imagine. However, we do have a large governmental sector practice within our firm. It is the largest practice within our firm. And you'll see there, just 126 cities, 500 governments served, and some of the other statistical stats on our governmental practice. You'll also see there, again, I'm Adam Fraley. I was engagement lead partner down at the bottom of that page, you'll see. We also had a director involved and another manager involved, both with significant experience in providing governmental audits to local governments. On the next page three, as I mentioned, we're a full-service CPA firm, so these are some of the other industries that we serve, as well as some of the other services that we provide. And then on page four, the financial statements, they are the responsibility of the city. The city's finance department annually is required to put together a set of financial statements in accordance with during accepted accounting principles and have those statements audited and submitted to the state of Georgia within six months of its year end. They did put together a set of financial statements and provided all the information and counting records that we requested to conduct our audit. And we issued our opinion, which we oftentimes call a clean opinion, which is technically an unmodified audit report. What that means is that these financial statements, based on our audit test work, are fairly presented in all material respects as of and for the year ended, June 30, 2020. On the next page five, going above and beyond what the state of Georgia requires, the City of Roswell prepares a CAFR. You'll see the other elements that are in a CAFR on page five there. The introductory section and the statistical section are both required for a CAFR but are not required for an annual financial report, that minimum, if you will, required by state law. So, another reason to really commend the finance department is going above and beyond what's required in the state of Georgia by providing this vast, you know, amount of information and document, including that stat section that goes back 10 years on the city's history. The next page, so a little bit about the financial statements. You know, the financial statements are broken down between government-wide, which is kind of all the funds of the city as a whole together, and then your fund financial statements. If you'll turn to page seven, I'm going to touch first on the fund financial statements, and mainly the general fund, which of course is the main operating fund of the city. You'll see there, and these numbers are in thousands, total revenues for the general fund for this fiscal year were about $77 million. Revenues of the prior year were about $78.9 million, so slight decrease there. And you can see a breakdown of those revenues over the past five years by property taxes, sales taxes, and other business taxes. On the top of page eight, you'll see there a further breakdown in that pie chart of the general fund's revenue sources. Of course, the largest being taxes, followed by license permits and other charge for services. You'll also see that the general fund had expenditures of about $69 million compared to $65 million in the prior year, and the breakdown in that pie chart by the different general fund expenditures, the largest of which being public safety. Then, on page nine, it shows a comparison of general fund revenues compared to general fund expenditures over the last five years. And you'll see how general fund revenues have behaved in a favorable manner over expenditures in each of those five years. So, that is the general fund, so the fund level statements being the main general fund. And then down at the bottom there, where it starts on statement of net position, going over to the next page, these are your government-wide. So, this is the city as a whole, all put together. Governmental activities, the equity position increased from approximately $270 million to $280 million, while the business-type activities equity position decreased from about $32.6 million to, a slight decrease to $32.4 million. It is important to note, so that equity position is referred to as net position, and it ended the year at approximately $197 million and $26 million for governmental activities and business-type activities respectively. A lot of that is in capital assets, net of related debt, and some other restricted net positions. When you subtract those out of it, $29 million and about $6.5 million for governmental activities and business-type activities were unrestricted and therefore considered available for operations. At the bottom of page 10, and it goes through page 11, this is kind of a Cliff Notes version to the footnotes to the financial statements, which are an integral part of the financial statements. So, I'd encourage you to look at those as you're looking at the city's CAFR as well. And then as, if you'll turn over to page 13 of the ADNA document, this is our required communications. Without going into detail on each one of these, I did just want to touch on a few. Skipping to page 14, as I mentioned, finance department deserves a big pat on the bat. We are required to disclose whether we had any significant difficulties or disagreements with management. I'm happy to report that we did not, you know, concerning any, you know, accounting standards or reporting requirements, you know, there were no disagreements there, and they were forthcoming with all the information that we requested. On the next page, one thing is that touches on audit adjustments. We did have some adjustments that were identified through the audit process. Those were presented to management and discussed with them, and they have been adjusted in the city's accounting records, accounting system, and also to the CAFR documents. So, again, to ensure that it is fairly presented, including those adjustments. And then turning to the next page, so the city, this is a section where normally we report findings. We did not have any findings for this year's audit. So, you know, it was an unusual year, it was a tough year. And in spite of all of that, the city did not have any items that we're required by standards to cite as a finding in the financial report. So, that's awesome. So, a real good, you know, audit result when it comes to that. There was one finding in the prior year that had been resolved that we noted during the current year audit as resolved. And then, the items on page 16, these aren't findings, but they are other areas that we noted just through our audit process for improvement. Each one of these has been discussed with management on disbursements and expenditures, capital asset-related items, and the general fund budget ado, I'm sorry, governmental fund budget adoption. Each of those, they were discussed with management. And then on the next page, related to cybersecurity, which, you know, I think we all can acknowledge is an emerging threat that all entities, including governments, are facing these days, and some recommendations there on that as well. But again, those are just my, our management recommendations. They were delivered to management and gone over with them. And then the rest of the document, starting on page 17 there and going through the end, these are new accounting standards that are coming down the pipeline. And, you know, really, we just want to make sure that we keep the finance office, council, abreast of these new standards. One thing to note is the GASB, which is the standard-setting body for accounting standards. They did defer some of these new standards. So, as you read some of that in there, you'll see where they delayed most of them for a year. And then, a new, a new big lease standard that's come out delayed it for 18 months to give a little more time to governments to respond to those, given the pandemic. And that is, that concludes my presentation, but if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Council have any questions, comments? Yes, council member Hall?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough, and thank you for the kind words to our team. We know they do a great job. I just have a question. What was the item that was cleared this year that was noted last year? Could you just remind us?
It related to one of the component units of the city. So, the city is required to include in its financial state certain entities that qualify as component units but are separately legal entities. And it had to do with the Roswell economic development and tourism. And it had to do with the equity reconciliation and reporting of accrued liabilities for that fund, if you will. And so, that was resolved during, you know, during the current year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Additional comments, questions from council? We do not have anyone in the public that would like to speak about this. I would like to thank our finance team again. I'd like to thank our staff in general for doing such a great job. And thank you, sir, for your report. It's good news.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I will go back to you, council member Willsey, for the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, approval of the FY 2021 mid-year budget amendment. This will be presented by Director of Finance, Ryan Luckett.
Hello again, everyone. So, we are here to present the mid-year budget amendment, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see that okay? Great. Okay. So, we are going to just kind of give you some background and recap what we talked about at the work session on January 11th. We'll go over those recommended revenue and expenditure adjustments as well as the department budget requests. Just to provide a little bit of background, and I'll take a little bit of a further step back than the last work session. As you might remember, back during the budget process for FY 2021, was obviously the beginning of the pandemic, a lot of uncertainty, a lot of unknowns about how this would affect the city and the degree that it would affect the city. So, the budget that was adopted for FY 2021 was very conservative. Most operating and capital initiatives were deferred until more was known, and we had a better understanding of how our revenues and expenditures would be affected. So, with that, we came back to you all at the first quarter to give you an update on how things were going. You all adopted a set of changes or budget amendments at the first quarter. That was back in November. And so, we came back to you here, January 11th, to provide you an update as of the midpoint of our fiscal year. So, as of now, we have about five months left in our fiscal year. So, we gave you an update on just how things are looking in the economy, both at the national and state level. We also provided an update on our revenues and expenditures. We provided an updated general fund estimate. And then, our departments presented their needs and their requests for the remainder of FY 2021. So, we're here this evening to request your consideration and approval for the mid-year budget amendment. So, I'll start by recapping the budget update that we provided in the estimate. So, on this slide, as you see here, this is a projection for our general fund for the remainder of FY 2021. And just to kind of walk you through here, so the first column here represents the 2021 approved budget. So, this was the original budget that you all approved back in June. The second column is our revised budget. So, this reflects any budget amendments that have been approved by you all to make changes throughout the fiscal year. And so, this includes the changes that were adopted at the first quarter. And the next column is our estimate for the remainder of FY 2021, and it gives you the variance. So, overall, so this first slide is just our revenues. So, overall, our approved revenues were $75.3 million. Our revised revenues are $76.5. We are estimating that our revenues will come in at $82.3 million for fiscal year 2021, which is a positive variance of about nearly $5.8 million. And just to hit some of the highlights here, so we'll start at the top with our property tax revenue. Within this category of property tax revenues, there are several different revenues that are included there. Two of the ones that are primarily driving this positive variance include our title out of alarm tax. That was brought down during the budget process because we, that is driven by car sales. So, we were unsure of how that would be affected by the pandemic. But those have remained resilient, and we're seeing that our And we're seeing that our title of alarm tax revenues are coming in or we're estimating it to come in about eight hundred thousand dollars higher. Um, than what um we budgeted. The other big piece of this is our recording tax. Um, that's something that is um collected by Fulton County and administered to all cities in the county. And it has to do with um new mortgage loans or refinancings that take place. Um, and that is significantly higher than we anticipated, about uh eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars higher than budgeted. So those are the two primary drivers for the property tax category. Um, for our sales tax revenues, as you can see, we're estimating that our sales tax will come in about two point two million dollars higher than what we budgeted. Um, our most recent uh sales tax collection was about four percent below the prior year, which is. Uh, great shape and our sales taxes has done a lot uh better than what we anticipated um during the budget process. Um, so here we're estimating about a two point two million dollar positive variance. Um, we're due to get our next uh sales tax payment here in the next couple of days, so we'll have a. A better idea as well uh on how um sales tax activity uh came out for the month of December. Next, our franchise alcohol and business taxes, um, we're estimating about a million dollars um higher than budgeted. The primary driver there is our insurance premium tax revenue, which we collect in one payment in October, it came in about six hundred thousand dollars higher than what we budgeted. Uh, moving on down the list here, the two point eight million dollars in our intergovernmental category. Um, that is the remaining uh portion of the CARES reimbursement funds um that uh we received from Fulton County. Um, so those are all the the positive variances, and I guess, as you can see, there are several negative variances that were, we wanted to take in, take into account. Our fines and forfeitures are quite a bit lower than the prior year and we're estimating about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what we budgeted. Interest revenues are down because of the drop in interest rates. Um, our transfer in, this is mainly related to the hotel motel transfer in, so we're. Again, recommending another decrease in that because of the um drop in hospitality, hospitality activity in the city. Which is affecting everyone in the state and the nation. And then finally, uh, we are recommending a decrease, um, or estimating a decrease in our lease proceeds. And this is something we've mentioned before, but uh you all approved a, the purchase of a ladder fire truck. Um, in this fiscal year's budget, those take about a year to manufacture, so we won't be receiving those proceeds. Um, this fiscal year, it'll be next fiscal year. So you'll see a decrease in revenue, but you'll also see it offsetting decrease in on the expenditure side. So overall, um, we're anticipating, like I said, additional revenues of about five point eight million, which is about eight percent um of our revised budget. On the expenditure side, um, we are recommending or anticipating um some savings on the expenditure side. Um, in our operating, as we talked about at the work session back on January eleventh, we are. Uh, estimating a decrease in um education and training and related travel expenses. Um, as well as that fire truck that I just mentioned, the one point four million. So overall, that would give us uh total expenditure savings of about one point five million dollars. I mean, just as a reminder, uh, we went, when we went through this process at the first quarter. Um, at that time, we also, um, and you all approved reducing expenditures at that point by a little over a million dollars. So this is an additional one point five million dollars that we would be reducing. So to summarize, um, as I mentioned, this is our approved budget, our revised budget and our estimate. Um, so if you take, if we kind of walk through our estimate, uh, we have a beginning general fund uh balance of twenty-eight million dollars. We're anticipating total revenues of eighty-two point three, total expenditures of seventy-seven point eight. That would leave us with a total uh ending fund balance of thirty-two point four million dollars. Uh, we do have our two reserves uh set aside, the twenty-five percent reserve of a little over eighteen million dollars. And our reserve for financial uncertainty that uh we set aside during the budget of almost one point six million dollars. And with that, uh, that leaves an ending balance over reserve of about twelve point eight million dollars. So next, I wanted to kind of outline uh what those recommended revenue and expenditure adjustments are to. Kind of summarizing from the um, the estimate that we just reviewed. So in terms of our recommended revenue adjustments, um, we're recommending an increase in our property tax revenue of one point eight five million. An increase in our sales tax revenue, uh, recognizing additional two point two million. Um, for our franchise alcohol and business taxes, we're recommending an increase of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, an increase in our licenses and permits of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we're recommending to reduce our fines and forfeitures revenue by five hundred and sixty thousand. Our interest revenue by a hundred thousand, our miscellaneous revenue by thirty-five thousand, reduction. Uh, reducing our hotel motel transfer in by fifty thousand and then reducing our um loan proceeds related to that fire truck by the one point four million. So that gives us a total revenue adjustment, a net increase of about two point eight million dollars. On the expenditure side, uh, we're recommending a decrease in education and training for that second half of our fiscal year, uh seventy thousand dollars. We're recommending a decrease of eighty-five thousand dollars in uh travel that's related to education and training. And then a reduction in uh related to that fire truck purchase of one point four million dollars. So that gives us total, a net decrease in general fund operating expenditures of one point five seven million dollars. So to summarize, all of these numbers I've been throwing around, um, so in the operating side of things, um. At, at, uh, from the last uh first quarter, um, we had three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in unallocated operating funds. Um, we're recommending um, recognize an additional revenue of two point eight million dollars. We're recommending to reduce expenditures um by the one point five million. Which uh altogether gives us a total available operating funds of four point eight million dollars. On the capital or one-time use side, um, we had five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in unallocated. Uh, funds, capital funds from the first quarter. We're recommending to recognize uh the remaining portion of that CARES reimbursement funding from Fulton County at two point eight million. So that uh provides a total available capital or one-time funding of three point four million dollars. Um, also just wanted to point out too, and we talked about this at the last meeting, uh, the work session on January eleventh. Um, in addition to what I just described, um, we also have, you know, four point six million dollars. In uh savings from the prior year from FY twenty twenty. And we're recommending to reserve that um for allocation to capital projects as part of the upcoming FY twenty twenty-two budget process. And that's typically been the standard practice um in previous years. So with that, um, we have our requests that have come from our departments. And as you remember, our department heads present all of these requests at the uh work session on January eleventh. So I'm not gonna spend time uh naming these again and we'll, we can come back to this if there are any questions on any of these requests. Um, but we had, you can see they're split out between our operating requests, the ones that were also deferred from the first quarter. Um, as well as the capital requests, and so those were all presented at our previous meeting, so I'll just go through these. And I'll be glad to come back to this if anyone has any questions. Um, as you might remember from our last meeting as well, um, we did have a request from the Roswell Arts Fund for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, those represented all the requests that we've received for the mid-year. Um, I also wanted to just provide um an update on. Um, what was also presented at the January eleventh work session, which was the employee uh class and compensation study. Um, as you might remember, that study showed that um the total cost of the recommendation from that study was five point six million dollars. And that was four point four million dollar uh cost for the general fund. Uh, staff has reviewed some options uh for potential phased implementation of the plan. Um, to include really two phases. Um, phase one would be the first half of the recommended increase, um, being effective March first, twenty twenty-one. Um, and phase two would be the second half of the recommended increase going into effect January first, twenty twenty-two. Um, and the table here at the bottom kind of gives you an, an idea of, of the cost implications um over those three years. So um, phase one, like I said, was March first, twenty twenty-one, would have a total impact to the general fund of seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Um, implementing uh phase one for the full year in FY twenty twenty-two would be two point two million. And then implementing phase two in FY twenty-two would be an additional one point one million for a total FY twenty twenty-two cost for the general fund of three point three million dollars. Um, and then finally, the compensation plan of the recommendation, um, should this move forward. Would be fully implemented in twenty twenty-three at a, at a full year cost of four point four million dollars. Um, so we did just want to provide this option, um, to you all for your consideration. Um, we're not seeking approval for this today, um, but we did want to um just. Provide this information so that as you're deciding about um the mid-year uh budget request, that if this is something that the council wants to move forward on. Um, that this uh funding for FY twenty twenty-one will need to come from this available funding that we've already talked about. So um, in terms of next steps, um, like I said, we're not seeking approval today. Um, and we also wanted to uh provide you kind of the full impact of the compensation study recommendation. So we'll be showing that to you as part of the five-year forecast presentation, uh, that we'll present to you on February eighth. Um, and like I said, we just wanted to provide this information so that you all know that any implementation or compensation study recommendation. Will impact uh available funding as shown as part of the, the mid-year budget amendment. So to summarize, um, overall, um, so in terms of operating funds, as I mentioned, we have four point eight million dollars in available funding. We have a total of five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in operating requests, which leaves four point two million dollars remaining. On the one-time use for the capital side, uh, we have three point four million dollars in available funding. We've received four point seven million dollars in requests. Um, so that's um in excess of one point three million dollars. But overall, we have available funding of eight point two, um, mid-year requests of five point two. Which leaves us a total remaining of two point nine million dollars. And as I mentioned last time, um, in terms of our financial policies and practices and best practices. Um, we can use our operating funds to cover some of these one-time expenses. We would not want to go the opposite way and use one-time funding to cover our recurring operating expenses. And just uh, as a reminder, this, the numbers we're showing you here, uh, that does not include uh the numbers we just talked about from the compensation study. So that was our general fund and I just, I also wanted to remind you that we had one request from our fleet fund. And that was just to fund uh the tool and auto repair equipment replacement, this was an annual recurring item, um, twenty-five thousand dollars. So with that, uh, that concludes the presentation and we will be glad to answer any questions that you might have, thank you.
Council, have any questions for Mr. Luckett? Councilmember Palermo.
Uh, Mr. Luckett, thank you as always for a great presentation, a lot of great information. And uh, it was, it was definitely as good the second time, so uh, so appreciate it. Uh, really, the major concern I have is I don't, I don't believe we're really prioritizing tax dollars for what residents. Really uh need the most and what's most beneficial to residents. So that's where I am disappointed that despite the, the request at the work session for there to be a normal adds and deletes request. And uh, and really kind of going through that to make sure we can all, make sure we're really fine tuning this and making sure it's most beneficial for residents. That hasn't happened and, and related to that, I'm disappointed that the way, the way it's set up that we've got, we've got item number seven right now, which is the mid-year budget amendment. And then we have item number eight and item number nine, which are all related to the mid-year budget and, and budget in general. And so uh, so with that, uh, I'm certainly hoping that it was, again, it was very disappointing when uh the twenty twenty liaison to uh, to finance chose not to have the. The historical practice we've had, which is, which is going through item by item for adds and deletes and having a vote for each. It was corrected and I thought we had a great process in uh, in November, I believe, where, where the finance liaison did walk through vote by vote, which I felt was much more. Effective, transparent and really ensuring uh exactly what we had discussed uh at a, at a recent meeting. A recent committee meeting, which was making sure that anytime we're gonna spend taxpayer money, we shouldn't be doing it in a vacuum. Anytime we're gonna spend uh taxpayer money, we should be making sure that we're looking at what are all the potential priorities. And let's make sure we're choosing which priorities that we want to select. And so that's where uh, related to, to item number nine, is the fact that I have some, I have some ones that I really feel are important for residents. And I want to just address the ads that I'm, that I'm hoping Councilmember Wilsley will be uh, will be doing a motion, whether, whether to approve or deny. Because everybody absolutely should vote on what they think is the best priority for taxpayers, but I'm hoping we are gonna get in this vote to make sure we have an amendment that uh. That hopefully has some compromise and hopefully has some more benefits to residents. So basically, there are one, two, three, four, five, six ads that I'm really hoping we're able to see. And I certainly have a number of deletes that I feel offset these, but those, those six key ads that I see. Is number one, a compensation correction for police officers.
Excuse me, Councilmember Palermo, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Uh, let me interrupt you with what the process is going to be tonight, that might be helpful to you. Um, I asked Mr. Luckett to present the staff recommendations for the mid-year budget. Then we will hear item number eight and item number nine before taking a vote.
Oh, I see, uh, so let me, can I clarify, I want to make sure I understand correctly, uh, Mayor Henry. So what you're saying is you want, the, the process you suggest is, in, in your, in your requiring is. Uh, that Mr. Luckett reads us all the staff aspects, but there's not gonna be a vote on the amendment until we've gone through eight and nine, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, that, that's very helpful and I, I appreciate that clarification, so.
Okay, so do you have any questions about the staff-generated um mid-year budget?
Not at this moment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for staff regarding their presentation? Councilmember Wilsley.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, and really just an observation or just a reminder, something I just wanted to clarify, that. The approved twenty, FY twenty twenty-one budget represented about a nine million dollar cut over what we would have been looking at. Um, had we not been in the pandemic, is that correct? So, yes. So it's, so it definitely, you know, it does represent a lot of uh seatbelt tightening and uh careful fiscal management by the city staff. Um, and by Mayor and Council, so I greatly, greatly appreciate that. Um, I'm happy to see where we have come out, um, I think that we had all anticipated much worse. But it's good to see that we are in a fairly, in a healthy position, um, and are, and are able to talk about some of these ads this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor, just then to double, double clarify, because in the past I've been kind of confusing. So we're not going to vote at this point on item number seven of today's agenda, that is correct?
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
But if you have questions, it would be expeditious to ask them now. While we're focusing on the proposed budget that came through staff. Yes, Councilmembers Zapata.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for the clarification. So uh, on page twenty-two of the presentation, I see there is uh, again, twenty-five thousand dollars. For the Roswell Art Fund, my question for staff is. Um, and I see that so far year today have been paid uh ninety thousand dollars. So my question is, is this ninety thousand dollars contemplate the already approved for. From some of my colleagues, the forty thousand dollars a few weeks ago?
Yes, that ninety thousand includes the forty thousand that was approved at the first quarter.
Okay, so which was, I guess, I understand a few weeks ago, we approved that on.
November thirtieth, yes.
Additional questions from council? Okay, so um, if you would like to call the next item, Councilmember Wilsley?
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Mayor, uh, this is item number eight, proposal to amend the existing FY twenty twenty-one budget, um, presented by Mayor Lori Henry.
Thank you, um, what I would like to bring forward to you all is, as you know, the city spent a great deal of money. Um, on COVID-related items and we were, were reimbursed uh by Fulton County on those. And we were reimbursed by Fulton County on those items. Correct, Mr. Luckett?
Yes, that is correct.
And as Mr. Luckett presented, there is, on page five, there's approximately $2.8 million that is left within that intergovernmental transfer. Now, keeping in mind that we had expenditures, we were reimbursed for those expenditures by Fulton County, and we've got $2.8 million remaining in that. What I'd like to propose is that we use $800,000 in what I would call COVID relief grants for our Roswell residents and our Roswell business owners, brick and mortar businesses. And all I'm asking of you tonight is to earmark $800,000. And then what I would like to do is continue the discussion on how we administer that. I have had numerous conversations with staff, as well as folks out in the public sector and other cities. And we've got a number of options. Mr. Luckett feels quite comfortable with the brick and mortar business grants, that we can administer those internally. But this council will need to set the parameters on who could apply for those, what are the requirements? And then the other one is for our residents. So it would be mortgage, rent, utilities, food reimbursements to our residents that can show that they are falling behind on those items. And we could have those administered through a local nonprofit. They're very good at doing that. And they would only go to Roswell residents. The business, brick and mortar business would only be Roswell businesses. And as I said before, I'm just asking you this evening to earmark the $800,000 for that. And I will come back to this council to determine how we're going to administer both of those programs. But from what I understand, in talking with other cities as well as staff, both are very doable. And I would like to say that I'm anxious to get it done because folks are hurting out there. So the quicker that we can help them, the better off we're going to be. So that is the gist of my item number eight. And I hope that you all will consider setting aside $800,000 for that program. Council have any questions? Councilmember Judy?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. I know you and I have talked off and on over the last month or two regarding this and, you know, the different ways that different cities are bringing things forward, whether it be alcohol licenses, rent, rent issues. There's a lot of different ways and creative ways to help our businesses and citizens. So I really appreciate you bringing this forward after we've kind of gotten through a lot of the financial burdens that we had to look at and made sure we're in a good position as a city to bring this forward. This is really, you know, being in a good financial position. I have to thank staff and mayor and everybody for such a great, for us being in a very good position coming out of this COVID as of right now. So thanks again for bringing this forward. And I look forward to working out the details and getting this into people's hands who needed ASAP.
Councilmember Wilsley?
Yes, thank you. And again, I just want to echo what Councilmember Judy said. Thank you for bringing this forward. I know this has, similar programs have been very well received and successful in other cities. And I know there is a lot of need in Roswell with both individuals and families and businesses. So I look forward to learning more details about how the program will work. But I definitely support setting the funds aside for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, as a business owner, always, you know, believe that the devil is on the details. And, you know, and everybody has experienced when they go to financial institutions to look for money, either to expand the business or start a new business, the first thing that the bank is going to ask you, the financial institution, where is your business plan? Where is your detailed financial plan? Before approving funds to give you for your needs. So, which I think that theoretically, the concept is very honorable. But I want to know, what was the problem for the last two months since it looked like you and Councilmember Judy have been discussing this? Where are the criteria that have been discussed so far? And the criteria that all council members will agree on? Because this has to be very, very targeted, very laser-focused, who will go and what kind of impact will have on the business sector and on the private sector with our residents? So I'm surprised, after all this time, that really no criteria have been proposed or discussed, how is it going to be allocated, when will be allocated these funds? So, like I repeat, the cost is very honorable, but the devil live on the details. And, you know, approving $800,000 of taxpayers' money without details, and we talk about this later, that is a process that I quite not agree, an approach that I quite not agree on. So the question is, when will it be discussed? The details regarding the criteria, how to allocate these funds, and something that we all can agree on. Because I think at a certain extent, most of us or all of us are in favor of that, depending of how and who and how much will cost of taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Well, I would like to respond to that, Councilmember Zapata. The devil is always in the details. I agree with you wholeheartedly. And what I am proposing is to earmark this amount of money and come back to this council to determine the criteria in administering this. Each, I want each and every one of you to vote on what we're going to be looking at as far as criteria. I did not want to, number one, I did not want to make a leap that you all would approve to set $800,000 aside. Number two, I didn't want to assume the way you would want to have it administered. So that is why I'm saying earmark it, I come back to you with the criteria, and you all set the details on how we're going to be looking at this and what criteria we will require for anyone to meet the standard in order to apply for these funds. Yes, Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor, for the clarification at this point. So then, so let me understand where the $800,000 came from? Because if we don't know how we're going to administrate this, who is going to receive, how much? Where the $800,000 came from? Is too much? Is too little? I mean, can you help us to understand where the $800,000 number came from to justify this proposal?
Well, one conversation I had was with Mr. Luckett on what he would like to hold in reserves from the intergovernmental transfers, i.e. Fulton County COVID reimbursement, and which left the $800,000. But I also looked at the level of reimbursement our sister cities had throughout North Fulton and what they were allocating toward these types of programs. So that is where I came up with the $800,000. And it puts us right in line with what our sister cities are doing as it relates to their reimbursements. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I just have a question for Director Luckett. The, after the 800, there's, can you walk us through the 3.8 million? How we're looking to allocate that with this $800,000 in there? That would be helpful.
So the city received about $3.9 million in CARES reimbursements, an allotment of CARES funding through Fulton County. And so the city submitted eligible COVID-related expenditures to be reimbursed for those expenses. So we've been reimbursed by Fulton County. So now the question is, you know, how the council wants to allocate basically this money that we've been reimbursed. So of the $3.9 million at the first quarter, the mayor and council allocated about 1.2 million of that towards the one-time compensation for staff. That left about 2.8, 2.7 in that area. It's actually 2.83. And so of that, you know, if $800,000 were to go to these programs, we would recommend utilizing or setting aside that $2 million to support the needs that the city also has because of reduced funding in other areas. So the city has a lot of capital needs to be considered now in the mid-year, also in the next year's budget. We think that $2 million would go a long way in helping us fund some of those capital needs that have been identified by the departments and have been prioritized by you all.
Additional comments, questions from council? We've got one person in the audience that would like to speak, and that is Mr. Richard Arena.
Thank you, Mayor. I am a COVID-19 survivor. And in my judgment, the proposed 900, 800,000 COVID relief grant is ill-advised. It is no doubt of noble intent, but I think it's seriously flawed for these reasons. Breathes are a soul in Roswell who hasn't been negatively affected by COVID-19 and/or the government's response to it. To distribute some part of the $800,000 to everyone who has been negatively affected would reduce grants to being so small that they would be of little benefit to anybody. So there has to be, as you've been talking about, some sort of selection process to determine who has suffered the most. That is a prescription for creating the impression, if not the reality, of political favoritism. Secondly, there are important priorities where that money could be used to deliver substantial benefits for the public. One place would be in the police department. Our police are probably, as a group, exposed more to COVID-19 than any other employees in the city. Roswell's police department, is my understanding, their compensation is not competitive with the number of departments in our area, which leads to turnover. And turnover in a police department is not only extraordinarily costly from a dollars and cents perspective. When we lose an officer, we lose their local street knowledge, which is a vital component of law enforcement effectiveness that cannot be duplicated in a training academy or in another jurisdiction. I realize that this is, would be a one-time expenditure, and so budgets would have to be adjusted in the future if money were applied to increase, this money were applied to increase police salaries. Thirdly, the fatal flaw I find in the proposal is it would violate at least two provisions of the state constitution. Article 1, Section 2, Paragraph 1 of the Georgia Constitution provides that action of the government in Georgia must be for, quote, "the good of the whole." Clearly selecting certain individuals and businesses for relief does not meet this constitutional requirement. Secondly, and similar, is Article 3, Section 6, Paragraph 6 of the Georgia Constitution, the so-called gratuitous clause. It says that governments in Georgia, which would include municipalities such as Roswell, shall not have the power to grant donations or gratuities. It seems to me the proposed COVID-19 grant program before you would fall under this prescription. In that regard, it is not unknown for government officials to ignore constitutional limitations and get away with it because the bar to hold public officials accountable outside the ballot box is so high that most citizens find it impractical and probably impossible to pursue a remedy through the courts. There is, however, one fast-track avenue that is constitutionally available to citizens, and that is the grand jury. By law, citizens have the right and the duty to inform the grand jury when they have knowledge of criminal activity. We normally do that through the police or the district attorney. However, the Constitution and case law provide that citizens have the right to notify any member of the grand jury, and their complaint must be heard. That doesn't mean the jury will investigate or issue indictment, but it does mean that if they agree there is probable cause, a criminal violation has occurred, they can hand down an indictment, which the district attorney, or in the case of federal jurisdiction, the US attorney, is obliged to pursue. By way of closing, I call your attention to the fact that violations of the Constitution by public officials can be considered criminal acts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arena. I would like to encourage you to read the compensation study that we referenced in the staff presentation this evening, because it will show where the police are in line and how that also relates to our other departments. And I would like to ask Mr. Davidson to comment.
So the provision that Mr. Arena accurately quotes is the gratuities clause, which is the main clause, which would say that you can't give money when there's nothing in return. What the city council would be doing when they prescribe the qualifications are, they are helping all the citizens by keeping businesses afloat, which is an economic benefit to the city as a whole, not just to a single business. Also, helping the residents of the city that are in need, that's also a benefit to the city because there becomes a drain on public finances when people have to go and condemn houses or other such things. So there are, he's absolutely right in his quoting of it. But the qualifications that the council set out, it would be totally legal and were to provide the necessary funding for the needy businesses and residents of the city.
And Mr. Davidson, can you opine on, what was it, the criminal? That this would be a criminal act?
So that would have to be an intentional or malicious act on behalf of individual council members. I don't think anything in this situation would rise to that.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the resident portion of the help. I would like to know how will be measured the degree of negative impact by COVID-19 for each resident of Roswell in need? We don't, I understand, we don't have access to IRS tax returns. I don't even know if we have access to state tax returns. How are we going to measure the level of impact on the residence aspect? I would like to focus for a minute there. I don't know if someone can give me some information and some ideas, please?
As I said before, and I agree with you, the devil is in the details. And that is something this council will have to determine what the criteria is at the guidance of our legal department and as well as looking at what our sister cities are doing to help their residents and business owners. And we might be able to model many of our criteria after what other cities are doing. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel, but I want this council to give it thoughtful consideration and this council to vote on what kind of criteria we would have. And that is not what I was requesting this evening. Additional questions from council? We'll move on to the next item. Councilmember Wilsley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item number nine, alterations to the existing FY 2021 budget. This item was deferred from the November 30, 2020 mayor and council meeting and will be presented by Councilmember Michael Palermo.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilsley. So with that, what I do appreciate, so what probably everyone noticed is is the majority of these, a strong majority of these, were all items that Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Zapata, and I had brought forward at the, for the actual annual budget. And so they were, they were all denied. In which case, we brought, we brought an adjusted version. And basically, what you'll see from an adjusted version standpoint is it was a larger dollar amount at the request at the beginning of the year because it was for a full year. So anything that is to be amortized over a year, you see smaller. Anything that's not amortized over a year and is more of a one-time cost is, of course, staying the same. And there were some, a few additions as well. But given the fact... But, uh, given the fact that we had raised it at the beginning of the, uh, annual budget process, and although it wasn't approved then, we, I, I certainly was very glad to see a number of the items were taken into account. So, uh, so I definitely am glad to see that. So that being said, what I'm going to focus on is, is really the items that were not taken into account. And, uh, and with that, as I mentioned, I'm focusing, I want to start by focusing specifically on six ads. And so the six ads on here that I'd like to discuss, and, and I'm certainly hoping we can get, we can get unanimous support for those six ads, and then knowing that, uh, there's certainly some items on here that, that help really cover those costs. I also have some additional proposals from the, from the mid-year amendment on ways to cover it, uh, and, and ways that we, you know, certain expenses that are proposed for the mid-year that I do believe we could push back till next year or future time. That being said, I'm, I'm certainly open to, uh, to anyone on this, on this council for any, any different suggestions, where if we can at least come to consensus that, that these six ads should be priorities, then, uh, but, but at the same time, you don't agree with, with all the proposed, uh, deletes, I'm certainly supportive of, of working together and finding different deletes instead. So again, uh, again, hopefully, first off, we can agree on the ads, and then, then if we don't agree on all the deletes, we can certainly, uh, brainstorm together. So I, I appreciate that opportunity. So going through the ads, item number one, uh, the compensation correction for police. So what this, what this deals with is the, and I, and I, I, I do understand that staff presented earlier a compensation study across all departments, and that's going to be discussed at a, at a future time, and there's different proposals, potentially start March first, potentially some other phases. Nonetheless, this is something that's, that's urgent, and for a couple of reasons. One, from everything I've seen, this is the only department where you have individuals that could take on additional responsibility, getting paid less than those that do not take on that additional responsibility. So that is, that is one reason it's important. Number two, everything I've seen in, in the last five years for, from a department standpoint, there's been no other department that has had a greater, uh, challenge with vacancies. So, uh, and, and one of the challenges with vacancies is obviously, um, challenges hiring, but then also that's where retention ends up being a factor as well, whether someone's, uh, leaving to go work for another department. Perhaps they're leaving the, uh, really just be working for the police and just completely leaving in general, perhaps they're retiring. Nonetheless, we've had a lot of vacancies over the years. They've, they've improved under Chief Conroy and the, uh, the police staff, which is fantastic, but nonetheless, it continues, it, it continues to be a greater challenge in other departments. So, uh, so with that, I'm really hoping, uh, council will support setting aside this money, this, this, in this current mid-year, to, uh, to really help correct that and, uh, and to get away from the, uh, some of the compression issues that still remain. Item number two, economic development. So this is really such an important priority for the city, you know, I feel it always has been. I think we could argue right now it's more than ever, and we really need to have a more focused, accountable economic development under, uh, under the, under the city council. And of course, that we can, we can work together in, in the upcoming committee to decide exactly how that's structured, but ultimately, that's something that's been really successful in Alpharetta. It's been really successful in Milton. In reading through the committee packet, I see in addition to Alpharetta and Milton, I believe Johns Creek as well, among, along with other cities. So, uh, so this is just really the opportunity to have mayor and council truly setting a direction for economic development and really getting, getting some expertise in-house that I believe can work really well with Roswell Inc., and, uh, and really work, work together well to make sure economic development is a, uh, important priority for, uh, for Roswell, as we support our businesses and our vibrancy. So that was item, item number two. Item number three, so currently, the, basically, all of the firefighters that, that are fighting fires are all part-time, which means they are either with another fire department, where we're not their main fire department, or they, I believe there's a number that are retired, uh, from, from other departments, uh, or, or, or Roswell's as well. But nonetheless, they're, they're part-time, not full-time, and that creates a risk in the, especially, uh, in the new world with COVID, et cetera, of, of just different aspects, knowing that they have their full-time position in other cities, and we need to make sure that our residents are all being kept safe. And, and basically, here's a proposal to just start out with three to show our fire department we are serious about that, but reducing risk. I think there's a great opportunity to give some part-time, uh, firefighters opportunities to be promoted into full-time roles. And, uh, and, and ultimately, the, the request at the beginning of the year was for twenty-one, uh, full-time, uh, captains. I, 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 I want to get there. I don't feel there's the, uh, budget available to get there yet, so I, I think starting with three would make it so we'd have one full-time captain for every shift. And so that's what this, uh, this request is right here. So that was item number three. Item number four, and, uh, and, and so with that, and this, and actually, for the following three, one of the biggest complaints I feel we hear from residents is traffic, and that we really need to be working and focusing on improving transportation. I feel that's, that's absolutely a priority for our, for our residents. And so something that had already been planned by RDOT, so they've already, they've already done some of the planning, they've already had different steps at curve first, they just don't now have, they just need the funding to, to go ahead and build it, is for a King Road turn lane improvement, for an additional lane to, uh, Roswell High School, which also, we discussed, would include a pedestrian refuge. So basically, for, for any of those that have driven by the high school or driven to the high school, um, it's when you, when you turn, let's say you're going on, you're on Crossville, you turn right onto King Road, it's two lanes, and then it quickly bottlenecked into one lane, creating a lot of backup. We've, we've tried to address these in the past by having those plastic, uh, poles that stick out of the ground, because it's been a major issue. That's helped with one of the issues, it hasn't really helped the bottleneck issue and, and all the backup. So this is, this is one that would certainly improve transportation for, for anyone going to the high school, anyone near, driving near the high school during those, uh, during those rush hour times, et cetera. So that is item number four. Item number seven, this is another item that RDOT has invested in, just like they did for, for number, uh, for number four. Item number seven is, uh, basically, they had done the plan for a turn lane at Woodstock Road onto ninety-two. That's something that I believe RDOT staff had actually created and planned for and felt there was a need for before the middle school was going in. So if they saw a need before the new middle school's going in, then certainly, with Crab Apple Middle School moving to right over there on Woodstock Road, there's certainly a need for, uh, for really improving that, that, that transportation there. And again, why were these two chosen? Basically, these were the two that were unfunded requested from, uh, unfunded requests from transportation, and, uh, and I think we really have the opportunity to fund these, and again, to show residents we're focused on transportation and improving the traffic issue. And lastly, staying with transportation, is item number nine. So basically, I, I stand by, we're, we're accountable, even if GDOT is making what they, what they see as these improvements as the, as the express lanes, and they're putting in that bridge. We obviously heard from a lot of residents, uh, when there was that MOU that we, uh, we ended up moving forward with based on the, um, what, the aesthetics of the bridge, but ultimately, it, it sounded like we were going to be reactive and have the bridge, and then after the fact, look at what are the ways that in traffic should be improved, et cetera. And I stand by when there's something that change, that, that's going to change Roswell that much, and, and really impact all those neighborhoods off Grimes Bridge, et cetera, and just everywhere that's impacted by the express lanes. We need to be investing in, in really protecting our residents and making sure that quality of life is improving and traffic is improving, not, not getting worse. And so with that, I, I requested this council hundred thousand dollars towards, towards that mitigation. It's, uh, it's, as you all know, that's a tiny fraction of the, of the cost of, of what GDOT's, uh, spending on the bridge. And again, ultimately, it's an opportunity for us to improve, uh, traffic and, and really help out our neighborhoods. So those are these six ads. If it, if, if it works, I'd love to answer any questions or, or have any discussion on those six ads before we talk about where I think we can, potential opportunities to pay for them.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Palermo. As we discussed many months ago, when this list was first presented, that when we determined that we understood our financial position, we could certainly look at these and, and hopefully move on a lot of them. And in fact, in the staff recommendations, many of these were included, but I do have some questions. My first question, uh, to you, I believe, uh, you're the liaison to, uh, public safety this year. We saw a chart in the compensation study, and if I remember, uh, PS one is a job description, and I, if you could clarify what that job, job is, and how it compares to PS six, uh, that would be helpful, and then I'll have a, uh, follow-up question, uh, based on your response there. I'd also like to hear from our police chief as to how he'd like to handle, uh, uh, and what his perception is, uh, in this area. Same thing with the, uh, with the, uh, station captain positions, the fire, uh, captain positions. Uh, I think that the, one thing the citizens of Roswell should note is that we currently have a, uh, uh, position out for bid for a fire chief. That fire chief, no doubt, will be transformational in our fire department, and, um, I really would like to understand, uh, whether this, uh, possibly fits into that or not. Um, as for, um, items four and seven, um, just want to understand, I'm, 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 I'm fine with those items, I'm even fine, uh, using some of our other, uh, uh, some of our other, uh, funds that, that, that were unexpected, that we've got to do them, because we got to do them anyway. So I don't want to start cutting things that don't necessarily need to be cut, but I am curious as to how those two, uh, pop to the top versus some of the other ones, and so just understanding that would be helpful, uh, to me there. And, um, uh, as far as, uh, number nine, I don't have an issue, uh, setting aside some money for a mitigation, uh, review, uh, but I think the normal process that we would go through would be a corridor study, and that corridor study, uh, would probably be a significantly higher commitment, uh, than that, and, uh, uh, sounds like something that, um, be curious to know if, if staff and the mayor would, uh, would be willing to include something like that in our upcoming, uh, twenty twenty-two budget, um, because it's a, uh, uh, significant project, uh, that needs to happen. So, uh, not sure which way to go there, uh, but, but, uh, I, I, I think my open questions are PS one and PS six, uh, comments from the two chiefs on those two items.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyser. Before we get back to you, Councilmember Palermo, uh, in the interest of conversation, I, I would like to make a few comments. I had already made the comment about the compensation study, and also I would like to remind everyone that, um, uh, compression issues were dealt with about three years ago, and not to say that they won't reoccur, um, and they do reoccur over time, but now that we are looking at, um, a compensation study, I think that, uh, that would be the appropriate time to address that. Economic development position, I've told you all, I was going to include that in the budget this, last year. I cut it because of COVID, and we had hiring freezes, and I couldn't justify asking for that while we were, um, freezing positions, but I fully support the economic development position. Uh, I also think that in that position, it's going to take a great deal of conversation on what that role looks like, um, among the elected officials, which will take some time. And then the three full-time station captain positions, I don't want to speak for staff, but, um, the fire department does support it, so, um, I, you know, I can't go against something that they don't support. Um, also, the King Road, the Woodstock Road, um, those, both are great projects, but I think we need to look at them in relation to other transportation projects, not pull them out and deal with them in a vacuum. So I think that's a great topic for, um, our budget discussions, which have already started, um, that budget will take effect in July. And then, um, the mitigation related to the GDOT express lanes. I am proposing, and you will see it in the budget that I present, uh, that in July, we fund a corridor study of Grimes Bridge. I think it's imperative that we do that for several reasons. One is there will be new impacts based on those express lanes, but also there will be new impacts based on the completion of OXPO. And I really think that it would be prudent for us to look at a corridor study. A hundred thousand dollars isn't, isn't going to do a thing in the corridor. If you want to put in a hundred thousand dollars as an earmark, and then we can, um, redistribute that money in, when we adopt our new budget, which would have a corridor study, I'm fine with that. But, um, a hundred thousand dollars isn't going to get us anywhere. So, um, my proposal is that Grimes Bridge go to the top of the list for corridor studies in the city of Roswell. So those are my comments. Other councilmember have comments before I ask Councilmember Palermo to respond? Yes, Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Mayor. Much to a little bit what, uh, Councilman Tyser said, um, and, and not to put staff on the, on the ball here, but why weren't these items brought via staff if they were necessary right now in this budget here? You know, I, I, if police chief was standing here saying, "We need this money right now," the fire chief was standing here saying, "We need this money right now," um, transportation was saying, "Hey, look, we need these done right here." I, I would, I would say, "Hey, that's what we got to do, let's go." My conversations have been that these are a bit off, especially after we hire a new fire chief. Now that the compensation study's in, and I spoke to, uh, chief the other day, we're down to eight vacancies, I believe, uh, which is a great number, um, which is probably in line with most other police, uh, departments around. Um, so hopefully, uh, we continue moving in a positive direction there. And, you know, as far as the mitigation study goes, I don't know if we need zero dollars, I don't know if we're mitigation of the, I don't know if we need zero dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars. We might need a million dollars for it, however. But to earmark a hundred thousand dollars that we could use right now, um, in different areas, uh, after this, uh, I think is probably, you know, if we take that hundred thousand dollars and put it toward, toward the police, uh, compensation, if that's what the chief wants, then, hey, look, that's a better use at this point in time, as long as we make sure staff and everybody knows that when this comes around and we do get to this situation, we are going to have to keep a close eye on mitigation before we get too far down the road. So that's my take on that. My other question is, is, uh, to, uh, I guess, Ryan or the mayor, whoever, but any, any councilmember can bring a budget, budget amendment at any time? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So, so after we pass this tonight, if there are things that are needed from the police and fire, from, uh, transportation, from others, I believe we can do that in short order, um, and, uh, not confuse the situation we're going through this evening that is based upon staff's request.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. What I really, 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 really like about all these initiatives, that they are hundred percent, they are hundred percent resident-oriented initiatives. And it's great, you know, and I agree with Councilmember Judy, that we have to listen about the head of departments, but also, but also, I want to remember, remind, that we need to listen to the community. We need to listen to the needs and the wants of the community. So when you see the community say, "Hey, yes, we need to have more, um, you know, police, less, uh, vacancy and rotation, and, and make sure that they are happy here and doing a great job like they have been doing." So why to wait for a compensational study when we know that these officers, they need to pay the rent today, they need to put food on the table today, they need to take care of their family today, know whenever mayor and council decide to implement the compensational study, because we know that this would be a huge help. And, uh, and you can ask the chief police, and I'm sure that he would say, "That will help. I'm sure it will help my people." So, um, this is regarding the compensation. Then regarding the, I'm going to go through some of them, all of them, economic development. I mean, if, if was proven last year that the most critical positions in any city was public safety, talking about, here, talking about police, talking about fire department, which was the other one most important, the one that touched economy, and what is an economic development director? And what is an economic development director, the one that will improve the economics of the city? So these two main areas, last year proven that much needed was public safety and economic development. So that is the point about economic development. We've been talking for five years and I've been advocating hard every single budget season. But unfortunately, I don't have the four votes and I don't have four people convinced that we need an economic development in-house to take us to the next level. So next, um about the the Grimes Bridge corridor, the two miles be between um Oxford Road and uh the two miles there. So I'm sure that part of the Oxford Road project contemplate some study, some uh corridor study or traffic study. If not, we are in trouble. Uh, it was not done many, many years ago when this project just started um back in fourteen, thirteen, somewhere there. Um, so I think that the two miles between Dogwood Road and Oxford Road, that need to be studied. Uh, and add to the Oxford Road uh corridor traffic study, hopefully add, no, start from scratch again. So I think that hundred thousand will give to turn the wheels. We need to turn the wheels, people. We need to turn the wheels on this study. Take it seriously. Two or three years when this project is finished is around the corner. So if we keep uh talking about later, 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 then later will be two or three years and we haven't do anything for the people who lives on the residential area of Grimes Bridge. So um so well, I mean, those, again, they are all resident and taxpayers oriented. I don't know if they are staff oriented or not, that I don't know, but I do know for sure that they are residents and taxpayers oriented initiatives.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments to add on to what some what some other folks have said. You know, again, the compensation correction for police, I think that's something that we in the city has like have identified as a priority for salaries across the board um for sworn and non-sworn personnel. Um, and we've seen a proposal from staff to help bring us a little more in line. Um, I'm not seeing any details um about how you would uh intend to distribute this hundred thousand dollars. So without having some details from you or a recommendation from the police chief, I uh I'm just not sure how that hundred thousand dollars would be distributed. Um, the economic development position, um Councilmembers Apada, you'll remember that we all agreed that that would be a priority during our strategic planning process. Um, and it is on the committee agenda for discussion on Wednesday morning. So I look forward to having a really positive and robust discussion with everyone about that position. Um, hopefully we can come together and decide on what that position description looks like and then go through um a recruitment process for that position. Um, I would imagine that it would be a priority in the FY twenty-two budget coming up. And if it's not, and we are, and if we are already in a position, again, we've established that we can make a budget amendment at any time if we're able to iron out those things and get that position description agreed upon so that we can go out and begin the recruitment process. Um, again, I completely agree that hiring a new fire chief will have a lot of input and may have a lot of input into how the fire department is um organized. So I don't think that allocating funds to hire three new police uh captains right now makes a lot of sense. Um, and again, I would love to look back at all the transportation projects that were proposed and put on hold so that we can um make some good holistic decisions about about that moving forward. Um, and as far as the planned mitigation um for Grimes Bridge, I completely agree that that situation needs to be looked at. I don't know what the right number is. I don't know if it's a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if it's, you know, a million. Um, I would like to hear that information from staff so that I had some idea of what the funds were going to and what to expect. So, thank you.
Before I get back to Councilmember Palermo, I wanted to make sure that any council member has um had a chance to weigh in. I I can't keep track now if you all weighed in or not. Um, so, okay, Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. And so a number of things I want to address and uh and especially a number of questions slash comments from Councilmember Judy and Councilmember Tyser. Uh, there was a question on the police, something about the police levels. And so basically, when I was, so I'm no longer the public safety liaison. When I was the public safety liaison last year is when meeting with the chief, really finding out what, you know, what can I be doing to help and and where is there really the need? And that's where I was educated on a number of many, many situations where the compression still exists. And so the file that I was provided, it's an it's an Excel file that includes job class description. It does not include the PS one, PS six, what what Councilmember Tyser had referenced. But the question being, where is the biggest example of this uh of the compression? The biggest example is when looking at MPOs uh to sergeants. And so the challenge being, so sergeants are individuals that are still, you know, uh on on the shift and they're still, they're still out there on patrol. But it is a role that that does take on more responsibility, in which case it's been a challenge uh being able to uh to have individuals motivated to be promoted to it. And so that's that's something that I was educated on when I was the um, when I was the liaison. There are some situations of the compression with uh PO ones and PO twos, that's a little less. And they were a, there were actually some with MPOs uh compared to lieutenants, which is of course a very large difference in uh in in responsibility. So so that's that's basically where where it exists. Uh, a question from Councilmember Willsey is how that hundred thousand dollars be allocated? And that that is, that is something that I would want to do it based off of the chief's uh recommendations. And and he's worked a lot with Jim Harner when when the chief was educating me on this. And a question came up about if this was a priority, then we'd hear the chief, you know, advocating for it. If the fight, if 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 getting, to to be clear, from a captain standpoint, it's not that we hire three new captains. It's that we promote, we potentially promote um three of our many, many captains to go from part-time to full-time and to be purely focused on Roswell. So it's not creating three roles that don't exist today. It's just converting three roles. But back to why aren't we seeing it from the chiefs? At the end of the day, they, the the chiefs are professionals and they uh they they work real hard and they uh they certainly, you know, uh, you know, work work with what they have. At the end of the day, they're not elected officials like we are. They don't have the ability to be beating nonstop, saying you need to be reducing this risk and get, you know, the full-time captains. They can't just be nonstop saying, you know, that you're you're not addressing the compression issues because they realize that they are, they're not the public figures. They're gonna, they're gonna take direction from mayor and council and they they do a great job doing it. But ultimately, it's our job to be advocating for what do we think is is right for our community. And I stand by what's right for our community is we immediately fix this pay issue for our police officers. And and I I stand by that's that's doing the right thing to really be making sure all our residents are safe with with the with the right retention, et cetera, of our offers, officers, and and really even just from a morale standpoint, make let's make sure they feel valued. From a fire department department standpoint, I know it's really expensive for twenty-one captains, which is why it went unfunded at the beginning of the year. At the end of the day, let's let's go in that direction and let's let's get a focus where we get some captains that are out there on the shift that are full-time focused on on Roswell. Um, a question came up, why these two uh transportation projects? So uh, Councilman Tyser, when you were, when you were the liaison last year, uh when we went through the annual budget, there in inside the binder, there was basically all the funded and unfunded requests. And if we look at all the unfunded ones, basically, these were the ones that were actually improving traffic immediately for under a million dollars. So basically, went through and looked at what are ones that aren't plans? Because there were some really expensive plans, but instead what were ones that actually they already have the plans and they just need the money to go ahead and build? And these were the only two that were unfunded for under a million dollars that uh that actually would have would have done some type of improvement. So that's, that's why it was those two. And then for Grimes Bridge, uh so Grimes Bridge, I completely agree. So a hundred thousand dollars is not, is not gonna be enough. Um, and so I actually totally support and appreciate the support potentially for uh for just earmarking that. Basically, my my thought process there is if we commit a hundred thousand dollars, it shows we are serious about this. It shows, it shows that we are gonna move in that in that right direction. We're not gonna, we're not gonna grade a hundred thousand dollars and then actually not, you know, invest and and move forward. So I think that's what we should do. It's similar to uh the, one of the items was the the CPR, the CARES package Roswell, which uh when Councilmember Hall and Councilmembers Apada brought that up, they brought it up back in uh September. And then, and then without having a lot of support or or uh or receiving any, any kind of really support there, they brought it to this to this meeting in November, just with a hundred thousand dollars. Of course, more is better, more is needed. But again, if if uh a hundred thousand dollars is at least that opportunity to see is there support and try to push for for just making a positive uh change, which again, I think a hundred thousand dollars earmarked earmarked for Grimes Bridge would do. And then so lastly, the fact was brought up that any, any elected official can bring any budget amendment anytime to uh to any council meeting. That that's completely a fact. What, the important part that it misses goes to the point I was making earlier, that we can't make financial decisions in a vacuum. We have a limited amount of funds and we need to look and make sure that we're working really hard for the best possible budget. Because ultimately, at the time of an amendment, a large amendment, like a mid-year amendment, a quarterly amendment, an annual budget, those are the times to do it, because that's when we're looking at all of our expenses and this gives us the chance to really do that. So for example, right now, there's, I I I strongly believe there's still a hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately of too much money that we're dedicating towards staff travel. We're still in a COVID year. We didn't come out as fast of of this as fast as I had hoped. So I strongly believe we should be reducing it. And then the challenge is if we vote for this tonight and we keep that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra of staff travel, then in a few months, you suggest that I bring one of these items back. At the end of the day, staff could have used some of that travel. Or uh, I forget from Mr. Luckett, if the way it works, if any, any operational cost that's not used can be can be used for something different. And I'm not sure if that's throughout the year or if that's only if it reaches the end of the year. But that's, so that's, that's there is my issue, uh that we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for staff travel that that I feel we should not be using in uh in the next five months. And again, if we don't reallocate that, that's money that staff that just legally has the authority to spend without without approval from uh mayor and council in their fourth county, without a public process. So so that's why I believe let's do our amendment, the right amendments at the same time in one large amendment instead of, instead of approving a mid-year and then a month or two later adding something when we don't have the funds to do it and we've already approved some expenses that weren't a greater priority. So so those are, those are my reasons why, again, I really hope to get support for all of these ads. And to Councilmember Tyser's point, my last, last statement I'll make right here is Councilmember Tyser brought up. Uh, I, if I understood correctly, he brought up that in looking at the budget and the presentation we got from Mr. Luckett, Luckett, there is the funding for these. And so uh, so if I I certainly have deletes to uh support them. But even if we can't agree on the deletes, I'd love to see these ads and make a better resident-focused budget.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Negative comments about me aside, let me tell you where I'm at here. And um, see if we can manage to get something accomplished here before tomorrow morning. There will always be compression in pay grades. It's because pay grades are a matter of not just uh uh being at that job, but also what, you know, the years of service and the range and all those things. So I'm fine taking a hundred thousand dollars and using it for the police force, but before I approve it, before I approve it to be spent, I wanna see what we are exactly curing. Okay? I think that's consistent with all the other comments. So whether we do it tonight or whether we do it in three, you know, three weeks, four weeks, whatever it is, I think it's the chief's job to come back and tell us if we gave it to him, where would he spend it? In an eighty-six million dollar budget, a hundred thousand dollars doesn't really, you know, if we don't do it tonight, it's not that big a deal. So that's where I am on that one. Unfortunately, I forgot to mention in my first comments, the economic development director. Uh, Councilmember Willsey uh uh said what I had wanted to say, which is uh, we're gonna have a robust discussion on Wednesday morning about it. I think it's really important that we agree on what an economic development director is and what it does. But I'm prepared to put that money aside tonight if that's what we need to do. That's not a problem for me. Number three is a problem for me because what our, what our, what our, our fire department is about to go through is transformational. And I don't want to get ahead of ourselves or our future chief. So if you'll, if you'll, if you'll humor me on that one, I'd appreciate it. As far as the King Road and the, where is the other one? Woodstock Turn Lane projects, I'm fine if you, if we want to, if we want to include those. I'm perfectly fine beginning to take things from our uh our list of things that we put on hold and get them started. We're not gonna spend all of that money before June or July anyway, I doubt. And so let them get started on those two projects if this council thinks those are are the most important of the bunch. And I I I can't really argue with it, that that they look okay to me. Um, where am I here? Uh, continuing on down the list here. You know, I I tho- tho- those are really the big ones. And I think if if you got those uh uh put together here in some way, I think we'd all be pretty satisfied. Um, but I don't think that uh the holding up the whole night, spending uh, you know, hours and hours arguing these things back and forth can really get us anywhere, because in the end, we're gonna do most of these. We did, we did a significant number of them, um, you know, between the time they were presented and uh what staff presented now. I think the one thing that was missing, I think we took a significant amount out of the travel budget in the amendments. Um, if I remember the presentation, um, the education and travel budget was taken down by, if I remember, like seventy-six thousand and eighty-five thousand, numbers like that. Uh, so Ryan can remind me, but I think most of your two thirty-five number has probably already come out uh in 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 the staff recommended amendments. So that's where I stand on it. And I would hope that that we could come to some judicious and uh 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 effective use of time here and 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 make our changes, make our additions and move forward. But I would like to say that I do not have an issue uh, you know, with the two big items here. Let's, you know, let's get them started and uh, you know, we're not gonna spend that money before before fall or spring anyway.
Mr. Luckett, could you um talk to us about the travel and training?
Yes, Mayor. Um, so uh, at the first quarter, uh, mayor council approved a reduction totaling a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That was about eighty thousand dollars in uh education and training and eighty thousand in related travel. Um, the proposal that's before you tonight for consideration would reduce or would cut an additional hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, that's eighty-five thousand dollars in travel and seventy thousand dollars in education and training. Um, those two cuts at the first quarter and tonight, those combined would total about three hundred and sixteen thousand. That represents about sixty percent of the total approved budget.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor. And a question for Mr. Luckett. Uh, Mr. Luckett, based on the funds that we have available, if we were to approve the mid-year budget amendment um plus earmarking the eight hundred thousand dollars for um CARES relief as well as earmarking funds for the economic development director position, the uh King Road Turn Lane, the Woodstock Road at ninety-two Turn Lane and the planned mitigation um at for Grimes Bridge, does that leave us in a good position going into the rest of the year?
Yes, we do have available funding for those items.
Thank you very much. Um, and just questions from council if you would be amenable um to that amendment.
Thank you. Councilmembers Apada.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Uh, so a question for finance department about the travel budget. Is still money to be cut there? How much is still after the eighty-five thousand dollar or proposed cut? How much is still left under the travel budget?
So um, let me see here. So with the cut from uh the first quarter and the cut that's being proposed uh tonight, that would leave two hundred and seven thousand dollars um total budget for both education and training and travel. Um, of that, um, forty-two thousand has been spent to date. Um, and departments went through a process, let me just speak to this. Um, we did work with departments um in the last month to get their needs and, you know, what they needed for the last half of the fiscal year. Um, and anything that they were, they noted as essential was funded. Anything that was left is what we're recommending for reduction tonight. So um, behind those numbers, there are So, um, behind those numbers, there are plans on behalf of the departments just to make everyone aware of.
So, sorry, uh, let me go back again to my question about the travel budget, how much is exclusively and only left on the travel budget? No education, just travel? But you mentioned two hundred and seven thousand, include both of them, how will you open this number?
So travel, um, we started out with a budget, improved budget of two hundred and forty-four thousand in the general fund. We are, we cut eighty thousand dollars in the first quarter, we're recommending an additional cut tonight of eighty-five thousand dollars. That would leave seventy-nine thousand dollars remaining in the travel budget.
Great, thank you.
Tyser.
Yeah, just real quick, um, I, Ryan, could you remind me, I think some of that, uh, remaining seventy-nine thousand, I think a significant portion of it is our code enforcement, our inspectors or something that, that, uh, previously had been outsourced, but now, uh, this year we in-source, and I think that would be important to know, um, uh, of that seventy-nine thousand remaining. If I remember right, that was what that was.
The, most of that is actually, um, for the police department, that you're right in that the code enforcement, bringing that in-house, that, that's one of the reasons that the travel budget increased, um, was to fund the education and training for those code enforcement officers. Um, but if you're looking at what's remaining, um, you know, I guess the biggest portion is in PD for their related.
Thank you, Ryan.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So, uh, first I'll talk about the ads before I get into the, the, the travel discussion. So based on, on the discussion that we've just had, um, it, it sounds like there's support for the compensation correction for the police, uh, knowing, knowing that it's not going to be spent until, until the chief come back, comes back to mayor and council for, for approval on the, uh, on his, uh, proposal, uh, for the economic development position being funded, knowing that we're about to talk in committee for what that role looks like. And so not for the three-time station captain positions, which I'm actually amenable to, but for a different reason. So I, I do have a confidence that whoever our future chief is, is going to see benefit in full-time captains. At the end of the day, I would want to make sure that our folks, our, uh, our next chief is able to, to hire, and so therefore, uh, therefore, I, 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 I'm, I'm okay delaying that, keeping in mind that, that you probably will see this come back potentially at the next quarterly review. But, um, from, from me, but that being said, for tonight where we are, that's something that I, I could get behind. I've heard, it sounds like there's support for the improvement at King Road and the improvement at Woodstock Road, and for the hundred thousand dollars to be earmarked, knowing that we need to look at what's the total cost and the study. So, so if, if I'm understanding that correctly, that's, that's something that I certainly, uh, support, uh, approving tonight. Uh, what I'd say is, first off, uh, Mr. Luckett, I got to give credit where credit's due. I think I had proposed, I, I have, I've been, been typing and, and making notes, so mine's varied. I think if I remember correctly, I had about sixty-seven thousand dollars from, uh, from travel that I was recommending cutting, and, and you all recommended cutting seventy. So give or, give or take, but bottom line is you've, you've fully got there, if not, if not better. So where, where we, we disagreed was on the travel budget. I, I do feel there's, in the COVID era right now, there's a lot of opportunity for virtual, uh, virtual certifications, virtual meetings, things like that, just like we're doing right now, and I know a lot of, of trade groups are doing the same thing. So I, I do believe we could be cutting travel and would prefer instead, when that can't be done, council approves it versus approving it ahead of time, because again, I don't want to see that, that money get spent without, uh, council approval on something different. There's, there's still the other, some other items in there for closure, uh, for counts, um, for, 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 um, car fund, et cetera, just different aspects that are, that are cuts. But again, most important to me, as I said from the beginning, I'm supportive of finding other ways. And again, if there was any interest, I certainly had, uh, four or five items within tonight's amendment that, that I don't feel are the best use of, of the taxpayers, but at the end of the day, um, I, I strongly want to see this compensation correction happen for police. I really want to see us, uh, showing we're serious about economic development as well as improving transportation. So that's, that stuff is definitely important to me tonight.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing, I had the opportunity to ride the city, uh, with, uh, with Director Ralph this past week. Uh, on item number four, one of the things that he mentioned, and I'd, I'd, I'd like us to make sure that, uh, that we keep it, we keep it on the, um, on the front burner, uh, he thought there was a possibility that some of that might be able to be funded by Fulton County Schools, uh, some of the, potentially some of the right-of-way issue, et cetera. And so, um, before we, before we roll out four fifty, uh, if some of that gets funded a different way, that'd be great, and I'd encourage Director Ralph to, uh, to do, to do his magic on that.
Councilmember Judy.
So, um, I could be supportive of these things tonight. I, I believe in the future, um, when we go down this road, I would really like staff's input and buy-in, um, in a meeting like this, where they come on and say, hey, here's what we're going to be able to use this for, here's what we're going to be able to do this, um, or even better, at the committee or work session, um, because I, a lot of this, as people, um, you know, look at it and say, well, this is political, you're helping this group, you're helping this group at Roswell High, where are you helping me at Centennial? You're helping the, you know, police, but, you know, what about the people of Public Works, you know? So, so my point is, 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 is if we're going to do it this way in the future, I would really like staff full buy-in, um, and, you know, we all don't have to agree with staff, um, but, uh, I would like to learn a little more, um, when we're going through this process, if that's the case, um, and, uh, but tonight I could support, uh, that, um, those initiatives that Councilmember Willsey and Councilmember Tyser said, uh, to move forward and, and, uh, get down the road, please.
Um, I would like to add something, um, and this is in reference to what Councilmember Judy just said. This was the proposal tonight from staff. This is what staff asked for. Now, if individual council members want to ask for something that our department directors didn't ask for, that they didn't think that they needed at this point in time, that's our prerogative to look at those, but I am not going to ask staff to present individual council members' wants. That is not their job. Their job is to look at the city of Roswell and determine how they can best function, how they can more efficiently run their departments, and yes, how that interacts with the residents and business owners in Roswell. Because if our departments are not functioning well, that means our customer service is down. So having said that, I support the staff-generated budget. I'll be honest with you, I do not support the arts fund request for twenty-five thousand dollars. And, um, and then getting into the others, I already said what I would support and what I had an issue with. Like I said, you know, a hundred thousand for Grimes Bridge, I don't have a problem with that, but you will see a corridor study in the budget I present to you in five months. Okay, let's, let's reiterate that. Five months, our new budget takes effect. Right now, our staff is meeting on a regular basis to determine what that budget looks like that will take effect on July one. So that's five months away. So when we're talking about, I can guarantee you that, um, our transportation department is not going to get a lot done on King Road, uh, within this next five months. I can guarantee you, a lot of these projects, Woodstock Road, isn't going to happen in the next five months. I would also venture to say that, well, I said I would support it, the, uh, mitigation on Grimes Bridge, nothing's going to happen in five months. But like I said, if we want to put a hundred thousand in, we can always pull that out later when we approve the corridor study, which is actually what we need to be doing. So, um, you know, if we want to go ahead with the economic development position, I don't have any problem funding it, but I can tell you right now, it won't, we won't use those funds in the next five months. Physically, mentally, we can't get there. Um, it just can't be done. And then with the compensation study, I, I just want to remind everyone, and I don't have any problem cherry-picking with the police department, but if you've read that compensation study, you will see that there are many other positions in this city that are far behind the norm than our police department is. So, and please don't forget about our other employees as well, because yes, they do bring a great deal of resident services to the city of Roswell, and I'm not going to go through them all, and I'm not going to name them all. But if, um, Councilmember Willsey is interested in making a motion, I just basically said what I would support. Um, I don't know that I'll get the opportunity to vote this evening, but, um, I would like to, um, start to round this up. Councilmember Palermo.
Excellent, thank you, uh, Mayor Henry. So, uh, basically want to, uh, want to comment and, and somewhat agree on something I heard from Councilman Judy, as well as, as well as Mayor Henry. So, uh, I certainly, I certainly agree, staff should not be advocating for, uh, for council members', uh, items. At the same time, a, a kind of a variation of something that this, this, uh, this mayor and this finance liaison could always consider in, in the future for the next, uh, you know, quarterly or annual budget or whatnot. Typically, um, where historically what would always happen is basically the finance department would request the, uh, the ads and deletes, you know, the Friday before the council meeting, whatever, whatever, whatever the timeline was, Wednesday, whichever date. But an interesting variation could be, you know, uh, always potentially doing a starter of a, any ads and deletes that any council members know they're going to have, bring it to a committee just to discuss and hear feedback on and, uh, discuss, and, and then that, and then maybe they don't include that add or delete for when the add or deletes do, maybe, maybe they add one, who knows? But just throwing it out there, that's up, that's up to the mayor and, uh, and the finance liaison. Um, I do strongly believe that, that approving these tonight, uh, send the, uh, send, send really the right message with, with urgency on these important aspects. I know not all of it can fully be started, obviously, in the next five months, but at the end of the day, the sooner we have it approved, we have it approved for staff, it, they at least know the clear direction, they don't have to wait for any surprises five months from now, they know they've got these projects approved, and, uh, and, and I'm sure the chief will be really quick in wanting to come back to us with his, uh, recommendation on how he would want to, uh, allocate those, those funds. So again, I, you know, if, even though I certainly am opposed to a number of the expenses in here, these, uh, these ads that we've just discussed are important enough where, uh, where I definitely want to see these move forward.
Before I entertain a motion, um, we also, we have someone in the audience that would like to speak, uh, Jessica Bowman.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for taking the time to listen. I'm a resident of Grimes Bridge Road in Roswell. One of the budget line items, which is item nine, that you've, um, discussed at length already, um, is mitigation related to the new Grime, uh, GDOT express lanes. I would like to take this opportunity to comment on the need for this item. Uh, council recently voted to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Roswell and GDOT. This was effectively a multimillion-dollar commitment by Roswell to two new bridges over Georgia 400, a replacement at Holton Bridge Road, and an entirely new bridge providing east-west connectivity over 400 at Grimes Bridge Road and Rain Tree Drive. There are in fact multiple major projects in the works south of Holton Bridge Road, the planned Grimes Bridge Road east-west connectivity bridge, I already mentioned, the planned Grimes Bridge Road at Georgia 400 express lanes, also already mentioned, but also the Oxbow Road realignment project in progress now, and the historic Gateway Project. GDOT projections suggest that building the east-west connectivity and express lane access bridge at Grimes Bridge Road will increase the daily traffic volume on Grimes Bridge Road just west of Dogwood by nearly three, thirty percent over what we saw in two thousand sixteen. If we include the increase in traffic expected to occur anyway without the project, this increase becomes nearly thirty-five percent. Put another way, this is an increase of about three thousand vehicles per day, or four times the threshold typically needing a traffic impact analysis and mitigation per section thirteen point ten of the city's Unified Development Code. GDOT data show these increases upon completion of the express lane in two thousand twenty-six, not at some long distant point in the future. Additional increases in traffic in residential areas from Oxbow project, Oxbow Road realignment and historic Gateway Projects are not clear. Grimes Bridge Road is mostly single-family residential and is an established residential character area in the current comprehensive plan. Residences, neighborhoods, private schools, and some of Roswell's most prized recreation areas front Grimes Bridge Road. Roswell has, for many years, put neighborhoods first and recreation first. Myself and other residents of Grimes Bridge Road look forward to working with the mayor and council to identify measures for calming and deflecting the additional traffic from these projects away from residential, school, and recreational areas of Grimes Bridge Road, and to establish commercial corridors such as Holden Bridge Road. For example, speed-sensitive traffic signal may be appropriate to place at Grimes Bridge Road and Grimes Bridge Landing. The mitigation budget line item is a great first step toward addressing resident concerns associated with the Georgia 400 express lanes and east-west connectivity. I thank you, we thank you, Mayor and Council, for considering this item tonight.
Thank you, um, Ms. Bowman, and I would also like to reiterate, um, I said I supported leaving the hundred in, we can always move it once we approve the corridor study, but the other thing about a corridor study is it has extensive public input, public meetings that are involved, and so I, I would like to throw that out there as well. So, um, it gives the, um, folks, the folks of Roswell many, many more, um, opportunities to voice their concerns, their wishes, and their needs. So, um, and I would encourage this council to approve that corridor study, um, in the two thousand twenty-two budget, that is five months away to implementation. Any additional comments from council? Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a clarifying question for Mr. Luckett, and that is, some of these items that are on the ad list, if these funds are unused by the end of this fiscal year, does that make a difference in how they roll forward? Like, I understand if it was for a capital project, it would stay with that capital project, but for instance, if it was a salary, does it roll into capital projects, or does it roll back into the general fund?
So any operating dollars, um, that are unused this fiscal year will become part of our fund balance, which will allocate for capital or other one-time uses.
Okay. So I think, council, that's probably something to consider, um, you know, with how we look at some of these things that we may or may not spend. I, I mean, to me, it would make sense that if we have the ability to make a budget amendment as needed, um, that we would do that instead of, um, you know, committing, you know, a, a salary amount that we weren't sure that we were going to spend back into a capital. That makes sense.
Councilmember Willsey, was that a question?
Well, it was just a statement, so, so, just, you know, how it's treated, so.
Councilmembers of power.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, every year with every budget, not all the projects are completed on time, and they, the money rolled over to the next year, so, but they started. So for example, um, a hundred thousand dollar for the Grimes Bridge mitigation-related or, uh, corridor study, you can start now saying, look, you know, we can start calling for proposals, we have money to start with, and then we can always add more, but that can be started. So, and if, you know, every budget, if it's not finished, will roll over. So I think that, um, the thing is to have the intention to start it, and this prove, if we vote today, hopefully item by item, uh, we vote in, in a name of clarity, hopefully the motion will come on item by item to vote, um, then, uh, then we'll start. The process will start, the priority will start, and, uh, and this will move forward. If it's going to be finished in five months, six months, or twelve months, uh, well, that will be determined, but it's going to start, uh, so that is important part. So I think that, um, hopefully, Councilmember Willsey will make a motion, item by item to vote on, uh, on those, especially on those five that have been identified, and there being some sort of support on, so then we can move forward.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you. I'd like, um, I think, I think the things that we're all in agreement on, uh, let's make as one motion and, and, and get through the night. You know, I think, I think we've got broad agreement on what we want to do, put them in the motion, and let's, let's, let's move forward.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I thought Councilmember Willsey asked a good question to Mr. Luckett, and I want to kind of follow up. and I want to kind of follow up on that question a little bit. So it'd be my underst- because government, I know, will move slow. I'm hoping we can move somewhat faster and and make at least a little progress, hopefully a lot, but at least a little process and progress in the next five months. But basically, I just want to understand this. So so what you're saying is, item number four, seven, and nine, those would all be capital projects, in which case, they would not go away. That money is still still there and approved for council to use, whether whether they they build the road improvement in May or in August, either way, they have that money. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, right. If the mayor and council approve money for a capital project tonight, it'll stay in that project and get carried forward to the following year.
And would that, would the mitigation, the planned mitigation related to new GDOT express lanes, would that, would that stay into the next year as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so my question then is on the compensation correction for police, which I certainly think the chief should be coming back to us, and that, and, you know, ASAP, and we're able to, we're able to certainly do this in the next month or so. So I actually don't see any, I don't really have any concern with that. But so economic development position, my hope is we, so my hope is we we can get that person hired ASAP. But we have, we have some details to work out, which we're discussing at committee. Hypothetically, let's say, so we approve this role tonight, and we've approved 70, up to 70,000 for the remainder of the of the year, whatever, whatever that that timing winds up being. But let's just say, the role doesn't get hired or filled until July 1. So the new year starts. So that 70,000 that's approved rolls over, but the the rec doesn't go away. The 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 approved position's still there, whether they start this this calendar year or or July, right?
Right. So I mean, if you if you approve this position tonight, and it doesn't get filled until July 1, then that $70,000 that you're approving tonight will just drop to fund balance and become part of our capital budget. But that position becomes part of our overall base budget, and it'll get funded fully at the level that you all said through your discussions.
Okay, excellent. And and to be clear, I absolutely want to see it get filled before July 1. I just wanted to understand the mechanics, because Councilmember Willsey asked a great question and sparked some questions from me. And and again, there's a number of expenses in here that I do not support, but these items I've been advocating long, long enough for. I certainly will support something that includes these these five ads.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm, are you asking for a motion?
I have been for a while.
Okay, perfect. I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY 2021 mid-year budget amendment, the proposal to earmark the $800,000 for COVID grant, and alterations to the existing FY 2021 budget to include compensation correction for police at $100,000, economic and economic development director position at $70,000, King Road turn lanes at $450,000, Woodstock Road at 92 turn lane at $350,000, and planned mitigation related to GDOT lanes at Grimes Bridge.
We've got a motion. Yes, Councilmember Tizer, question?
I was going to second the motion. I'll wait for you to ask.
Okay, so Councilmember Tizer is offering a second to that motion. Councilmembers of Pata.
Thank you, Mayor. So a quick question regarding the $25,000 for the Roswell Art Fund. Is this included in the motion, or this is, will be a different motion, or how it's going to work?
That amount was not included in the mid-year budget amendment, and I did not gather that there was council support for that. So it is not included, unfortunately. If you would like to include the $25,000 for Roswell Arts Fund operation, I would be happy to amend my motion.
Are you good, Councilmembers of Pata?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to take a 15-minute break, and we'll be back. Thank you. That was a much-needed break. And now we'll turn it over to Public Safety Department, Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Item number 10, approval of tax amendment to section 21.1.2 of Code of Ordinances of the City of Roswell to prohibit non-drive participation in street racing and/or reckless driving exhibitions. This is the second reading.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Article 22.1, Traffic Control, Section 21.1.2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Roswell, Georgia, to prohibit non-driver participation in street racing and/or reckless driving exhibitions and for other purposes. Now, therefore, to accomplish the foregoing, the mayor and council of the City of Roswell pursuant to their authority hereby adopting following ordinance, text of which is incorporated herein by reference, I refer this to be the second reading.
Thank you. And Councilmembers of Pata?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question. Is this also will include any of this activity in a in a private parking, let's say, in a shopping center? Sometimes you see, you see the black mark of the tires around a column or a live post. Is this also will contemplate on a private parking space?
Mayor. Can you hear me?
There he is.
Yes, this would cover private property as well. And there's also a state wall that covers that type of behavior as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So Captain Ratliff, my my question actually is is less around the the ordinance. So as I discussed last time, I feel this is important to make sure to protect, you know, those out on the street, as well as those being disturbed, trying to sleep. Question I have for you is, I feel there was a lot of, lot of noise where, you know, you know, I could, I could even hear it. I heard from a lot of residents. And and I know, I know the department ended up picking up, you know, looking for it. Has it still been an ongoing issue recently? I support this no matter what tonight. I'm just kind of curious to see if it's if it's died down a little bit.
So this issue is still very much ongoing, just nationwide in general, especially in the metro Atlanta area. We have been very fortunate. We took a very aggressive approach to this as soon as it started. So we have seen a decline in the number of incidents happening here in Roswell. And this ordinance, as you know, would just go to further that enforcement action to be able to help us to curtail that behavior even further.
Excellent. Great work. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Additional comments from council? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Motion to approve item number 10.
Motion by Councilmember Judy. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is a recommendation for closure to discuss personnel litigation and real estate.
Do I have a motion for closure, Councilmember Judy? Second by Councilmember Tizer. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. We are adjourned. And it passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report.